This regular meeting of the Lincoln Lancaster County Planning Commission of January 22nd, 2020. A printed agenda is available outside the hearing room and a copy of the full agenda, including the staff reports, is available at the front of the chambers with the clerk. The Open Meetings Act is posted just inside the doors at the back of the room. If you parked in the parking garage across the street to the north, the gate is open and no parking coupons are needed. Out of courtesy for those attending this meeting, the commissioners and the staff, cellular phone usage is not permitted in these chambers during any portion of this meeting. We appreciate your cooperation. Please note that the Planning Commission action today is final on the following items: 2.1 Special Permit 15062A, 4.2 Special Permit 19056, and 5.1 Preliminary Pla 18002. Any aggrieved person may appeal final action of the Planning Commission to the City Council or the County Board by filing a notice of appeal with the clerk within 14 days following the action of the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission action on all other items is a recommendation to the City Council or the County Board. The first item of business is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held January 8th, 2020.
So moved, Campbell.
Second, Edgerton. Jerry?
Okay. Albardre?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Ryman Yost?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Cor?
Yes.
Motion carried, nine to zero.
We do not have any items on the consent agenda today. I will now ask Jerry to call any requests for deferral received prior to the meeting.
Okay. We have received two separate requests on behalf of the applicant for deferral. The first item is a request is a four-week deferral for item 2.1 Special Permit 15062A, which would delay the public hearing to the February 19th hearing. And the second request is for a two-week delay of item 4.1 Special Permit 450R, which would defer the public hearing to the January 22nd hearing.
That's today.
It's today.
I'm sorry, February 5th hearing, sorry.
Thank you.
Is there, okay. Actually, we would need a motion.
Any one?
Move deferral of the two items.
Second. Finnegan?
Jerry?
Okay. Albardre?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Ryman Yost?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Cor?
Yes.
Motion carried, nine to zero.
We do not have any items on the consent agenda today. I will now ask Jerry to call any requests for deferral received prior to the meeting.
Okay. We have received two separate requests on behalf of the applicant for deferral. The first item is a request is a four-week deferral for item 2.1 Special Permit 15062A, which would delay the public hearing to the February 19th hearing. And the second request is for a two-week delay of item 4.1 Special Permit 450R, which would defer the public hearing to the January 22nd hearing.
That's today.
It's today.
I'm sorry, February 5th hearing, sorry.
Thank you.
Is there, okay. Actually, we would need a motion.
Any one?
Move deferral of the two items.
Second. Finnegan?
Jerry?
Okay. Albardre?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Ryman Yost?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Cor?
Yes.
Motion carried, nine to zero. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on either of these two items rather than waiting to the respective dates?
I don't see any. Okay. So, we are ready to start the regular public hearing. The staff will make a brief presentation. Right, I'm on track, right?
Yep, you are.
Okay. The applicant will then be requested to present his or her testimony, followed by those who wish to testify in support, followed by those who wish to testify in opposition. The staff will then be given an opportunity to respond to the testimony, and then the applicant shall have an opportunity for rebuttal. If during your testimony you have copies of documents or materials you would like distributed to the Planning Commission members and/or included as part of the record, please provide that information to the clerk for distribution. Each person testifying should state their name and address, and shall have five minutes to speak unless additional time is requested and granted. The timer will go off after four minutes, then you will have one minute to wrap up your testimony. The Planning Commission will vote immediately at the close of the public hearing unless the commission votes to defer action or continue the public hearing. Jerry, will you please call the first public hearing item?
Yes. Item 4.2 Special Permit 19056 to allow for the development of a community unit plan with up to 24 single-family detached and/or single-family attached units on approximately 4.15 acres with requested waivers on property generally located at South 41st and Randolph Streets. Staff recommendation is for conditional approval, and this is final action on this item unless appealed to the City Council within 14 days. Are there any ex parte communications to be disclosed?
Yes. I attended the January 2nd neighborhood meeting put on by Witherby, and then I also met with a couple of the Witherby neighborhood folks on January 10th. They just, I was kind of answering questions about process and that kind of stuff.
Okay, noted. Are there any others? Okay. Are there any ex parte communications that took place or additional information you learned while visiting the site?
I don't see any. George?
Thank you. George Wesselhoff, Planning Department. So the location where we're at here, this is South Fortieth Street, Randolph Street on the south, J Street on the north. The parcel in question is here, it's a 4.15 acre piece that's zoned R2. You should have received a memo with revisions to the staff report. There were two revisions. The first revision was due to a reduction in the number of units. The applicant initially had requested 24 dwelling units. That was reduced to 18. The Second Amendment is due to the Witherby Neighborhood Association request, which the developer agreed with, to add specific criteria for the dwellings to meet neighborhood design standards. And so, get this icon on here. The 18 units consist of 13 new units that would be located on the new proposed cul-de-sac, and there would be five homes retained that are existing today, two along Randolph Street and three that are on J Street. The street itself would be a public street with public sanitary sewer and water. The future land use map identifies this area for urban residential, so the proposal of 18 units is appropriate for this site. The developer has requested three waivers. The first is a waiver from the subdivision ordinance to allow block length to exceed 1,000 feet for blocks and neighborhoods originally platted prior to December 31st, 1949. The proposed block length is just over 1,200 feet at 1,204 feet, and that's due to grade elevation differences, especially on the north side of the project. The second request is a setback reduction from 25 feet to 20 feet for the lots which are interior to the site along the cul-de-sac, and that's to allow better configuration and use of the property while still providing for the setbacks. And then also, there is the existing South 41st Street on the south side of Randolph Street. Due to the existing homes that are being retained on the offset of the cul-de-sac, there's a request from the design standards to be at a center line of 24.54 feet instead of 120 feet, so that the new streets will not be, or the new street will not be in alignment with South 41st Street. I would mention, it came up at the neighborhood meeting, one of the concerns was storm water management, and the developer has proposed soil conditioning as an approved alternative for water quality, which LTU Watershed has approved, they've reviewed that. The developer's engineer can speak to the particulars, but it would be something that would be reviewed further, which, when each individual building permit would come in to make sure that it complies with that. Also, I would note, respective of storm water, that the proposed development is approximately located in the center of the block, and it drains to four different basins, and the existing storm sewer is at capacity, or excuse me, would not exceed capacity with the project. So with that, I could answer any questions you may have.
Do lots 1, 17, and 18 face Randolph Street?
Lot 1 is here. It faces Randolph, yes, and then 17 and 18 are...
On Randolph Street?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
And George, their driveway will stay put, as is, off of Randolph?
Yes, for the existing homes.
George, can you, oh, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, 1's not an existing home, though, correct?
Correct. Lot 1 would have a new, a new home.
Yeah.
And, and they would have to relinquish access to Randolph Street.
So the driveway for lot 1 will be on South 40, or, I'm sorry, 41st Street Circle, not on Randolph?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay.
George, can you remind me, it's been a while, hopefully you can remember, we talked about when we have sidewalks and an outlot for a development, and about fencing, this might be before your time with us. And I'm just wondering, I can't remember if that was put into the code or not.
Are you referring to the pedestrian walk in the outlot to J Street?
Yes.
Yeah, actually, I'm glad you brought that up. I would mention, as noted in the report, that there was an issue with the grade, and as one of the conditions of approval, the developer will have to modify the grade to meet the ADA 5%, so it will meet that threshold. I'm not sure about the railing or fence question.
Well, some time ago, maybe a couple of years, we had an issue where there was a kind of a dog leg on a sidewalk that was on an outlet, outlot, and so I think a text amendment went through where fencing can't be on an outlot, you know, for a sidewalk to prevent kind of that tunnel effect. And so I wanted to make sure, am I remembering correctly?
Yeah, I think, I think the issue was visibility and safety, and the fence obscuring views and things.
So I just want to make sure and get that on the record here, so that if those, I mean, I know that the property owner owns where that fence is gonna go, but those homeowners don't put up a privacy fence and that kind of stuff, so it blocks that. Any idea what I'm talking about?
I might have to defer to others on that.
Okay.
That question hasn't come up before, at least that I'm aware of.
Steve Henderson with the Planning Department. Previously, our outlots were five feet wide, and so when you had a fence on either side of it, it gave it a real tunnel effect for the four-foot sidewalk, so we changed it to be 15 feet wide. You're still allowed to have fences, but it's now 15 feet wide, so it avoids that tunnel. In this case, the outlot, I believe, is at least 15 feet wide.
That was it.
Okay. Thank you very much for clarifying.
And that's outlot A you're talking about?
Yes. Up on the north side, yeah.
Yeah.
Any other questions for George? Okay, thank you. Applicant?
Nate Burnett with Reeg Engineering, here on behalf of Rosberg Enterprises. Just want to think, planning and public works, they've been great to deal with. We've had a couple of different meetings with them throughout this process, and honestly, this, this process and this project has dated several years, and they've been great to work with. Just elaborate a few things that, to extend off of what George said. What we're proposing is keeping the R2 zoning, so we're not asking for any reduction on that, and as you can see, pretty much everything surrounding this is that R2. 2.83 of the 4.15 acres will be disturbed as part of this, so only about 68% of the actual overall boundary will be impacted. We did meet with Witherby Neighborhood Association on January 2nd. The meeting went well, it was great turnout, had lots of good feedback, and the developer has continued to work with their association, and as you read, you know, they were formed to basically try and limit stuff that would happen within their, or their boundary. And yesterday, they came out with a conditional letter of support, saying that they appreciate and recognize the significant improvements the developer has made to the residences and the landscape of the current properties that he owns. There were a couple concerns at that neighborhood meeting, and just kind of talk about those things that had come up and how they've been addressed or have been working to be addressed. Housing design standards, just with us having the neighborhood design standards, there were some concerns about how they would look yesterday as part of the updated conditions. There are some additional front porch, different things that the developer has agreed to follow through, so we feel like most of those things have been addressed. The sidewalk that was mentioned going on outlot A, we've tweaked the grading some, we've tipped the cul-de-sac, so that there's actually going to be a low point here on the north side, and there's going to be an inlet that picks that up, and then underneath the proposed sidewalk, there's going to be a storm sewer that'll be tied into J Street. And so by, by doing that, we are able to get the grades to be below the 5%, and so that is, is no longer an issue. Drainage was a concern, and typically is with infill projects. As George mentioned, the site currently sits basically on, on a hill, and it drains four different directions. There's storm sewer north on J Street, and then there's storm sewer further west and east on Randolph. So, pre, pre-post calculations, did a little grade school coloring here for you guys. This is pre-development. The green is going to the southwest over to Fortieth and Randolph. The pink is going to 42nd and Randolph, and then everything in orange goes up to J Street. This is pre. This is post. So Area 2, which comes to the southwest, has a net decrease in, in Area. Area 3 has about a 3% increase, and then Area 1 has a slight increase as well. However, it should be worth noted, noting that the actual area that drains to the neighboring properties decreases because we are tipping this to a curb inlet, so everything, front yards, street paving, will be captured, so there's just gonna be a little area here, and then a little area on Area 1 that will drain onto the neighboring, so we've actually reduced the drainage onto neighboring properties. And then lastly, the, the top, the soil conditioning, which is what we've worked out with watershed management. It is basically taking that existing topsoil, tilling it up, bringing in compost and sand to help with the infiltration, and we've done that on a few different projects up in Omaha, and that's been successful, and we had proposed it to watershed management, and they felt that was acceptable. So, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
The two north drainage orange?
Yeah.
Are on other lots, correct?
That was, yeah, 1B and 1A. That was part of a overall drainage analysis that we did for the city to show that, at the end of the day, what was going to the J Street area, since that's in sump condition, was not going to be negatively impacting that storm sewer system.
So they, those lots already drained to J Street?
Correct. Yeah, the, yeah, it's just C, D, and E that are actually within our project.
Okay.
And Nate, just, just to pick up on that, so the orange areas that you just referred to within the project, that, that stormwater really doesn't escape the, the development boundary? Is that being picked up primarily at that, at that curb inlet and then piped?
Right.
To the storm sewer in J?
Yeah, so, current, this, currently, this is all Area C and D, which are within the project site, are draining?
Right.
North, just sheet flow. And then now, everything within E will be captured with that curb inlet here, and then so only C and D will actually sheet flow, so...
Oh, but, but C and D are sheet flow, they don't, they don't, they're not directed back to the, to the curb?
No, no, they'll sheet flow.
Gotcha.
But, but that's where we'll have that soil conditioning to help with infiltration, so, to help with the neighbors.
Okay.
Nate, I know in the, somewhere in all the stuff that I read on the project, it talked about, when you're doing the drainage study, you looked at if it would be good for major and minor storm events. Is a major storm event, would that be like a 100-year flood, or is that what you were using as your?
Yeah, we, the city requires looking at the 2, 10, and 100, and so 2-year would be a minor, would be a minor storm, and then 100 would be major.
Okay.
So...
That's what I thought, but I wanted to make sure.
Yeah, and the, the city storm sewer would be 10-year on J Street, because that's in a sump condition, that would be the minor, would be a 10-year, since that's in a sump condition.
I know I had another question, and now I forgot it. I should have wrote it down. Anyone else? Okay.
Thank you.
Nate, could I get a copy of, or just email me a copy of those exhibits?
Oh, sure.
Thank you.
Testimony in support of this application. Come on up.
My name is Kathy Holland. I live at 501 South 55th Street, and I'm here representing the Witherby Neighborhood Association. I'm the current president. Just to let you know, Witherby is bordered by 33rd and 56th Streets and Randolph to O. As both Nate and George mentioned, there was a public meeting held at January 2nd, and I guess we'd say Witherby hosted that, and we had a good turnout, not just from our neighborhood, but from some of the owners of the properties that were across the street, some of, and so we felt that was a real positive, at least to get the conversation going. As a result of that, we've, we developed a committee that kind of looked at the application a little further, and I guess I should say too, Witherby's had a history of being interested in infill projects. I wasn't active at the time, but in 2003, there was another project proposed at the site, which would have built 100 child daycare center, and two, two 8-unit apartment complexes, and a 16-unit apartment complex, which would have greatly increased the density and the traffic. So, that was actually the, the beginning of Witherby Neighborhood Association. I'd say since then, Witherby's been vigilant about watching this property and trying to keep track of any proposed, any other proposed developments. And now 17 years later, Mr. Rosberg has proposed a development that will build single-family homes, which we support. Mr. Rosberg has lived on this property, so we appreciate his understanding of the neighborhood and what might be a good fit here. We were told by several who attended the neighborhood meeting January 2nd, that he has been a good neighbor and a good landlord. Witherby Neighborhood Association did have two concerns about the application. The initial proposal was to build 13 homes along, alongside five existing homes, as you've seen, but the application did request the option of building up to the maximum of 12, 12, 24 dwelling units, which would be the amount allowed for this area. We opposed this number. We met with Mr. Rosberg, the Planning Department staff, and are pleased that the application has been amended to allow only 18 dwelling units on this property. Secondly, we were concerned about the design of the homes, fitting in with the character of the neighborhood. As you know, much of Witherby is built 1920, 1950, so it's an older neighborhood, and we were hopeful that the development looked like not only the homes around it, but would, would fit with the character of the neighbors, of the other homes throughout the neighborhood. Again, in meeting with Mr. Rosberg and his wife Lana, we shared our vision for what the development could look like, and we are pleased that we were able to define neighborhood design standards specific for this property. This was done in consultation with planner Ed Zimmer and through discussions with Mr. Rosberg. You will note, the memorandums, revision 1 and 2, to the staff report from George Wesselhoff addressed both of those concerns. I guess I would like to thank Mr. Rosberg for his willingness to work with us, and in conclusion, I'll just highlight the paragraph that we listed in our letter to you yesterday. Witherby, Witherby Neighborhood Association supports the cop permit request that is amended to reduce the number of dwelling units to 18, with the new dwelling units to be constructed with the four mutually agreed upon design standards. We request to approve the amend, amended permit request so that the further enhancement of the Randolph Circle property may begin as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other testimony in support of this application? Testimony in support. Okay, well, we'll switch over to testimony in opposition. Anyone here to testify in opposition? No? Okay. Staff questions? Anything? I still haven't remembered mine. No? Applicant? Anything you want to come up? Okay.
I would move that we approve, close the public hearing.
Second, Beckius?
Jerry?
Okay. Albardre?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Ryman Yost?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Cor?
Yes.
Motion carried, nine to zero.
I would then move that we approve the amended staff report and approve this project.
Second, Joy. Discussion?
I'm very pleased to see this, if you, there's a few areas in older neighborhoods, one
Okay, this is for conditional approval of special permit 19056. Albadre?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Ryman Yost?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Beckyus?
Yes.
Cor?
Yes.
Motion carried, nine to zero. Okay, the next public hearing item is item 5.1, preliminary plat 18002, to add 430 residential lots on approximately 152.1 acres, more or less, on property generally located at the southwest corner of West Old Chaney Road and South Folsom Street. Staff recommendation is for conditional approval. This is final action by the Planning Commission on this item unless appealed to the City Council within 14 days. Are there any ex parte communications to be disclosed?
I don't see any.
Are there any ex parte communications that took place or additional information you, you learned while visiting the site?
I don't see any of those either.
Okay.
Desi?
Thank you. Desi Redman, Planning Staff. So this is on the southwest corner of West Old Chaney and South Folsom Street. This is a request for a preliminary plat. And the concept behind a preliminary plat is to show us kind of how the overall subdivision will generally develop. Shows things like street network, connection points, and general lot layout. The site is within the future service limit and is designated for urban density, urban residential density land uses in the city's future land use map. It is anticipated that this subdivision will develop incrementally with future phases of annexation and rezoning. The first phase was approved for annexation and rezoning at the corner here back in July of 2018, and that was on approximately 42 acres. The overall preliminary plat is proposed for three phases. The first phase is for approximately 140 lots and would be platted without any additional improvements being made. The second phase here requires the construction of the intersection of West Palm Canyon and South Folsom Street, and that's approximately 240 lots. And the third phase would require the construction of a roundabout at Southwest 9th and West Old Chaney, and right-of-way dedication for roundabouts to access off of Southwest 12th at West Paradise Drive and West Pleasant Hill Road. Requiring these connections with the phasing plan will allow appropriate emergency access to the southwest portion of the preliminary plat. There were some concerns by fire department, but we've worked with them to address those concerns by having this type of phasing plan. Sewer is currently not available to the site, but it is funding in the next CIP, so it will be available when this begins to develop. There is currently a water main in South Folsom Street. There is also a parks, park planned in Outlot F, and that would be to serve the greater area. A separate annexational agreement will address the details of the parks and improvement of the arterial streets and access point, points. Lincoln On The Move funds and developer contributions are helping to fund these public improvements. And staff is aware of a motion to amend by the applicant and is agreeable. We've worked together to meet some of these requirements, which is why the preliminary plat has been on hold for such an extended period of time. So with that, I'll take any questions.
Any questions for Desi right now? No? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Bob Benish, B-E-N-E-S. I'm one of the developers of, of this project. We have a team of the White family and us. And we kind of started this project back with the, the initial phases, which was about two years ago, three years ago, we've been working. We're on our last phase of that, and we're ready to move into this. So we're pretty excited. What makes this a little bit different from other developments we've done? This is truly affordable housing out here. This is great. This is what Lincoln needs. Our lot prices have been in the 40s to 50s. You know, I, I build a lot of houses around town. I can tell you, it's very difficult to find lots that are in, you know, in that $50,000 price range. So we're very fortunate to be bringing these lots on board for the community. This project is a little bit unique in that we, the one that's before you today is surrounded by three arterial streets in a quarter section, which is very unique. So, and obviously with arterial roads, we have things like roundabouts. And so staff has worked very well with us. This has been a long, the reason this has taken so long is because we had some very big obstacles to get over. But we feel that we've worked them all out. There's a lot of roundabouts here, but, but we feel that the, the process that we have, how they're going to get paid for, how they're going to get reimbursed, we're happy with it. And I think staff is happy with it. So I won't talk along. I know you guys want to get back to the Trump impeachment hearings. I'll turn it over to Danae.
Maybe people are watching us.
Maybe, maybe they are. Good afternoon. Danae Kalkowski, appearing on behalf of Southwest Folsom Development LLC. I think Bob and Desi have done a good job explaining the project. I just have, I have a little motion to amend that I want to submit, that just as a result, basically, of the work that we've done over the last couple of weeks. We've been able to submit and revise site plan and also revised phasing plan to the Planning Department as a result of, of submitting since the last hearing. And so there's a couple of conditions that really are no longer applicable now that we've submitted some revised plans. So we're just going to ask for their removal. I'll wait till everybody gets there. So the first note that we're asking to be, or condition that we're asking to be removed is 1.1.12. And that's set on sheet 2A of 19, add notes per the 12, 12, 19 markups. So that sheet was the phasing plan. And so there were markups talking about what intersections would be triggered with the phasing plan. And so we've been able to work out that with respect to those intersections on Southwest 12th Street. So they have a new phasing plan now, so there's no need to, to address the markups on the old plan. And then the other condition is 1.1.22. And that was to add a general note that basically there needed to be further review by L T U of plans for the intersection on Southwest 12th. Again, that's been addressed now, so that additional information's been provided, and we have an agreement on phasing and construction of those improvements. So that condition is no longer needed. Other than that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. I think we answered some a couple of weeks ago, but if you have any others, either Bob or I would be happy to, to answer them.
Any questions? I think we got them all the way last time.
I think so, too.
Okay, testimony in support. Testimony in opposition. Staff.
Feel okay about the, oh, sorry.
Yeah, that's, that's a question I asked guys.
Feel okay with the applicant's motion to amend?
Yes, we are agreeable with it.
I had a note to myself here that was brought to my attention when we were looking at those specific conditions. In 2.1, it says, you know, the City Council approves that change of zone. Is that the right change of zone number there?
Let me pull it up. Give me one second.
Sorry that I can't remember the right change of zone number.
You know, I can't remember off the top of my head. I know it was obviously in 19.
Yeah.
But, so I can go back and look and just
Thank you.
make sure that that's correct.
Anything else? Okay, applicant, any?
I move we close the public hearing.
Second, Beckyus.
Jerry?
Okay. Albadre?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Ryman Yost?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Beckyus?
Yes.
Cor?
Yes.
Motion carried, nine to zero.
I would then move that we approve the preliminary plat application 18002 with the two amendments that were proposed today.
Second, Beckyus.
Discussion?
This looks to be a, a nice development. Mr. Benish has been very successful in seeing that this product does have a place here in the Lincoln market. And I think it would be good for the community to continue to see these type of developments continue.
I would agree with that, and I'm pleased to see some less expensive lots coming on the market.
I agree. Another great example of the developer working and making sure everything's ironed out. We really appreciate that. And we'll go ahead and support it. Jerry?
Okay, this is for the conditional approval of preliminary plat 18002 as amended. Albadre?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Ryman Yost?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Beckyus?
Yes.
Cor?
Yes.
Motion carried, nine to zero.
We are adjourned.